Then let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Steve, if you'd note the time and attendance, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Right. First up, we will do our flag salute. So you can switch the screen there, man. Thank you. Right? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic and one nation.
God, invisible, the routine justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up is our agenda review. Accept the motion to approve the agenda as published. I wonder if there's discussion, of course, in the other.
I move to accept the agenda as published.
Second.
Second, any further discussion on the agenda tonight? Moved and seconded, Steve, if you take the role of votes.
Yes, going to go alphabetical order, Irv?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Tom?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Well, first up, we have our consent agenda, and Dan has asked to share a couple of words regarding that before we we vote on it. So I'm going to let him do that.
Thank you, Jonathan. One to, you'll notice that the temporary employees to be non-renewed. I just wanted to point out a couple of clarifications. You'll notice quite a few positions there that are highlighted with a note entitled to, and it'll, if you recall back last summer, even about a year ago, we went into a hiring freeze. And as we thawed out of that freeze, we had a lot of different positions that we we moved together. That's why you'll see so many of these different types of positions. I just want it noted so that that if you see a place where it says entitled to return, that means it's really the position that is being non that is not returning, that person will return to a previous position. So I just wanted to point it out that that anywhere where those that's noted that those people are returning to previous positions, it's their current position that is non-renewed. I hope that makes sense. And if it doesn't, please, please feel free to ask me a question on that because it is pretty kind of confusing because it's a longer list than we normally have.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Questions for Dan before we look in motion and approve the consent agenda?
And I looked over that with everybody whose position is does not have a highlight after it. That is truly a position that is not that person is not returning, or there's one kind of you'll see a double name on there. But the people that don't have a highlight after that, those those positions are not returning. That person is not returning to that position for next school year. Hopefully, that didn't confuse things even more.
Right, thank you. Yeah. Given there's no questions apparently for Dan, I would accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
And move to approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on consent agenda?
Jonathan, Shelley got booted out somehow, and I see her now. Shelley, are you are you all set, Squirt?
Sorry, I didn't realize.
I don't see her in the attendees list.
She's here on the screen. I see her.
I see her.
Do you have sound, Shelley?
She's muted. Oh, she says she can't see us.
Shelley, I would try logging out and logging back in.
All right, we'll wait just a minute here. Hopefully, she'll be able to jump right back in. If you learn anything during the Zoom meeting era that we're in, it's dabble in grace all around because it's a challenge for everybody.
Okay, I'm sorry. I totally got booted.
No, that's okay.
And I was like, I have a question.
That's fine, Shelley. We just waited.
I'm sorry. Dan, I'm so sorry. I couldn't see the document that you were reading from. And can you put that up and just kind of quick summarize that again? Because I couldn't follow what you were doing because I couldn't see and.
I'm not sure if I can screenshot that because I'm.
Hmm, okay. It was in our our packet, though, yeah?
Yes.
You were talking about. Okay, so you don't have to screenshot that. Or you don't have to show me the screen. I think I know what you were talking about. So.
Yes.
Okay. Geez.
Yeah, and and really, just again, a quick recap is that if anybody has a highlighted, it's really the position that's that's being ended. They're returning to a previous position in the district.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we did have a move in a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda at this point? Okay, hearing none, Steve, would you please make the vote?
Irv?
Hi.
Janet?
Hi.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Hi.
Shelley?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Thank you.
Right, thanks, Steve. So that brings us to our superintendent report. And Scott's got a couple of things he's going to share with us. So we'll hand the ball over to you, Scott.
Sure. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, everyone. I I have a couple of slides I want to run you through having to do with our opening, bringing kids back to a hybrid model. Before I do that, two quick updates. Number one is that I know our community really wants to know about what we're doing to reconcile days that we lost during the ice storm. And and I just wanted to say we're working diligently on that to come up with a solution. And I will be prepared to share my recommendation with the board at the March work session. So that gives you a little bit of heads up there that I will come to you at the March Boardwork Session with my recommendation on how we will reconcile those days. In addition to that, before I get to the slides, everybody knows that the governor's new executive order. I think we're waiting for the guidance from ODE. ODE is the official sense maker for school districts, and we need to see how they've interpreted that executive order. But I can say with a bit of confidence that we don't see any major changes to our plan or to our timelines at this point. A change, I will inform you in the community as soon as I can, but I don't see any major changes happening. We are ahead of the game. I know we have some districts out there who are under a lot of stress right now trying to get together their timelines because they are ambitious if if they haven't been planning for that. But so comparatively, we're looking in really good shape. So having said that, I'm going to share the screen. Can you all see that? Okay, thumbs up. Okay. So I just wanted to go over a few updates and what those updates look like for us. And I just want to take every opportunity that I can to mention that students are coming back to a hybrid model. And that means they will have school two days a week. The other two days, there will be independent learning activities at the direction of the teacher. And then Mondays are set aside for teacher planning, staff planning, deep cleaning of buildings and so forth. So hopefully, this visual gives continues to give you an idea of how that will look. But again, there's never want to let an opportunity pass by to let our public know that students are returning to a hybrid learning model. So we just received the metrics for today, and Marion County is at 130 cases per 100,000 and a test positivity of 3.6%. That's well within the less than 350 cases per 100,000. And Clackamas County is 83 cases and a test positivity 3.4. So definitely on the right track there, and we've seen improvement week to week. And that is good news. Today was the first today, this week will be the first week that kids will start coming back in groups into more of an orientation week, and that's for elementary. And next week, we will have student, all students begin hybrid instruction. And we will still offer comprehensive distance learning to those families that requested it. We will still honor that because at the elementary grades and the middle school grades, it's still feasible. And in the in grade six through eight, again, we have a little bit of a different metric, which is less than 200. We're well below that in Marion and Clackamas County. And today, all teachers in six, eight return to the middle school facility. And on the 15th, six through eight will have a soft start with targeted groups. And then we'll have spring break, and then March 29th, all of six, eight will begin in a full hybrid model. And we will also be able to have CDL for those families because it's still feasible for those families that requested it. As far as high school goes, again, metrics haven't changed. And on March 15th, all nine through 12 teachers will reporting back be reporting back to the SHS facility. We'll have spring break, and then March 29th will start to bring in targeted groups and grade levels for a full start on April 5th. And this is a lot of work for everyone. Our teachers have been teaching this entire time, all three CDL, and and now they're trans. They're moving back into the facility and ready to start hybrid instruction, which is a different type of teaching than in CDL. So I just wanted to make sure I gave a shout out to our teachers who are who are operating in CDL in their classrooms while setting up for kids to come back in hybrid. And I know everybody's excited about that. And I was able to, with some of my colleagues and and two of our board members, go around each one of our facilities to check in with folks. And and I can tell you, everyone's really excited to be around kids again in in our buildings. Some of the things we're working on that are priorities, number one is bus and transportation. That's huge, and we are working really diligently to make sure the routes get to where they need to be, and that information gets out to to our families and is understood by our schools. And along with nutrition services, our our school reopening committees are meeting regularly because we're implementing safety blueprints as well. And staff trainings are being done by our school nurses. And we're very fortunate to have their team working alongside us as well. And our schools are each holding community town halls once a week. And that's to give our community information specific to to each school and each school community. And those will be happening for the foreseeable future. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Janet and Lori, who accompanied us on almost all of our school visits as well. It was great to see. And I wanted to also give a shout out to all the principals who have worked around the clock to make sure that their facilities are as safe as possible, working with their reopening committees really looked great. I was really proud of all of them. Having said that, that's a quick update for you. I I would like to open it up for questions if you have them and or concerns at this time.
Any questions for Scott on update or reopening? Yes, Jen.
I just want to make sure that I understand the metrics bit.
Yes.
Like, even if we're in the very best metrics category, we still have to provide cohorting measures. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and it's something that we're paying really close attention to because one of the things that we've heard coming out of the governor's office is that the metrics might change again also. So 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 that's one thing. It's the cohorting piece that is the most difficult piece to navigate. We're paying close attention to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Shelley.
Just just to follow up on that question, what? So when you said that the metrics could be changing, I hadn't heard that. What what is the speculation? I mean, does that mean we're if it gets weird, we're pulling our kids? I mean, I I think that's kind of a hanger.
Yeah, no, I don't. We don't see it. We don't foresee it having any any major impact on what we're doing already. The numbers keep looking better. But again, and whenever they say metrics, we're not quite sure exactly what they mean. But right now, to go back to full in-person instruction is less than 50, but we still have a cohorting rule. So.
Right.
Anyone on my team want to comment on that? No? Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is stay tuned. But if I had any information that would make me nervous about that, Shelley, I sure would tell tell everybody.
Okay, yeah, I think that was just kind of a kind of jolted, you know, it's like, whoa, wait, hold on, metrics are going to change again. And that kind of makes everybody nervous to which way is it going to go? Because there's been a lot of surprises.
Oh, I agree.
So that's not, and that's not fun.
It's not fun. Yeah, the the guidance should be out, I think, earlier this week.
Okay.
Rather than later this weekend, and we'll have to wait and see.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. There's no more questions?
All right, Lori.
Hi, I had a question. It, I mean, I know what I've what I have witnessed visiting the schools. But can you just speak to the ventilation and what that looks like per school as far as windows or air purifiers? I've had people ask me. I've seen air purifiers. I have seen the windows open. All the principals have been very good about touching on those.
Sure. So so we've ensured that each of our spaces does have appropriate ventilation. And and when we went to each building, certainly that was evident. I mean, it seemed like just about every room we were in had had an air purifier. If not that, then then it was really well ventilated as well. So Leslie, did you want to add anything to the ventilation issue?
I am certainly not an expert in ventilation, but I've learned a lot. And we have some amazing custodial maintenance staff members who are HVAC technician type folks. And so they did a full audit of all of our rooms that are being used in every building. And there's a massive spreadsheet that goes through and talks about the type of filter. If it has an HVAC system, then it has this type of filter or that type of filter. And if it doesn't have an HVAC system, then this is the type of ventilation. And it walks its way through a variety of things. So it's it's pretty complicated, as I know you, Lori, experienced on our.
It is. It is complicated, but it's it's nice to hear, too. I just to let the community know.
Sure. And those are medical-grade air purifiers, as I know, or have the special filter.
Great.
It was so great to have you come along, Lori and Janet, to to see that firsthand. Other questions?
Okay, we'll go ahead and we can move to your next topic.
Tom, did you have a question real quick? Tom?
I don't know, maybe maybe some of them, maybe some of the custodian guys might want to talk about about how the how the HVACs have been amped up and how that's how that's working. I just a just a off-the-wall suggestion, maybe that, you know, I want to give a report at a future meeting.
Sure. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Anything else? Thank you all. Jonathan, I I have here the SIA engagement detail and priority spending. I believe that's that's next.
Yep.
And you all have that document on board book. And it's pretty straightforward stuff that the the engagement detail lists out all the things we do to engage stakeholders in Silver Falls. The things in red are the things we've been doing this year. I I think one of the biggest game changers for Silverfall this year is the implementation of Parent Square. And just by the numbers, I think already this year there have been almost 4,000 posts. The interesting thing is, in terms of direct messages that comes from attendants or from our special ed staff to our families, it's, I think, 3,000 DMs a week. So that's a lot of communication. It goes through just one application. And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on my team, but I believe we have it's darn near 99.5% connectivity with in terms of reaching out to our population. And the the really neat thing is the whole dashboard experience of of seeing exactly who we've communicated with, who read the messages and who received them. It really is a game changer, and and I know just from being here for, you know, just this year, it's really, really helped in each one of the crisis crises that we've tried to navigate. So that's just one, one of the many avenues that we that we use to communicate. But and all of them are listed there for you. And it and there's probably even more that we just haven't thought of. But, you know, those are the major, major ways that we engage our community. What's also new this year is my open meeting with all 500 Silverfall staff every single week at 3:30. It's an open meeting. Every single Silverfall School District employee is welcome. In good times and in tough times, every week, I will be at the Teachers Rock Channel at 3:30. Even when we come back to in person, I will do it virtually to make sure everybody has access. That's an incredibly important tool to make sure that our staff have an avenue to be heard, to share their thoughts, and for myself and whoever from my team is present is there to to listen and to to take feedback. So just a couple of the of the many different ways we we take input. But I just wanted to mention those two. Anybody have any questions about that list? At all?
It's not a question, but I will point out that having some family in neighboring districts who have been frustrated, they've they've been hearing good things actually about our district regarding communication. So just anecdotally, it seems like it must be working.
Thanks, Jonathan. I appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Nope. The other document you'll find is the SIA 2122 Priority Spending. You all approved the SIA plan last year, this time last year, actually. And then I came to you with sort of a re-priorities or priority list of because our our funding, we got a third of our funding. And those spending items have not changed. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we're continuing with our plan on that. We just got our allocation for next year. And Steve, I don't know the exact dollars and cents, but I think it's two and a half. Is it 2.5 million at this point?
Yes, we just found that out at the end of last week, about 2.5 each of the next two years. And that's, I believe, that's per the, you know, the governor's.
Very, very, very healthy number. And of course, you know, our our major priority is on Sequoia Falls and having a plan for our students who have not responded to traditional schooling. And we want to make sure that they have choices after high school like everyone else. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Jen Hannan, who is also a point person on all things SIA is is in the audience to answer questions as well if I can.
So last year, we had it, we had an original plan, and we had to modify the plan. Remind me this year, what is the delta between what we had planned originally for year two and what we're going to get for year two? I don't think that's clear to me.
Yes, let me just pull up. So if you see at the bottom of that document, SIA on hold at the bottom, SIA approved projects on hold, change priorities. So there was there was planning for a STEAM teacher, some career expanded CTE, school psychologist, and 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 some student health and wellness center exploration. And those those right now are just being put on hold until we can make sure that the things that we prioritized are fully up and running.
Okay, and so the things that are prioritized, you're saying, match what they they match last year or they match our original year? That's I think that's the part I was confused.
The the funding for next year matches this year.
Okay.
The items that we're funding this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Let's see. All right. All of you have the the all information related to the boundary. That was a lot of work that started, I believe. I believe we started ramping up for that back in September, late September. And I just wanted to make sure I thank publicly thank the work group and certainly everyone that I've worked with at the central office to make this possible. We've we set out to accomplish one major goal, and that was for the work group made up of our own stakeholders and community members to have full ownership of the recommendation. And then a second goal was to achieve transparency to the fullest extent in terms of the process. And so with that being said, and I gave the presentation at the work session. And you all have had the the information for a couple of weeks now. Is there anything that I can answer, comment on? Anything at all before before you vote on that later? Or maybe even if if we have a board member, because I know all of you attended at least one session. If if we had a board member, if you want to make a comment about the process or what you observed during the process that may be helpful?
Well, I answered a couple, and it certainly was was well-run. There were lots of good questions, lots of ideas floating around. And of course, when the final recommendation came out, it was well explained. And it seems how I think one of the things I would look for is is I think one of the things I would look for is is there any concern group, but I haven't seen people coming out saying, hey, I'm really concerned about this. I don't know that I've received a single email on it actually. There was no public comment, at least not last time or the time before. And, you know, so, yeah, well done.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who worked on that. I know, Scott, I asked you the same question the other day about have you had any concerns from our community members? You know, email, phone calls and such. And there's just been, you know, just not really anybody who's been concerned. If there are questions, they've been answered. So that's a good sign to me that this process worked and it was well done. And I enjoyed going to the meetings and listening to some fruitful conversation. Really impressed with the professional integrity of all the people that were there. And the ideas were amazing. So kudos to everybody and the process. So.
Thank you, Shelley.
Yeah, I'll just add add to what Shelley said for just a second. And I think it was a really great idea to have those outside consultants facilitate the process because that really ensured that people, the community members who had come together to take on this responsibility felt that they were being objectively led rather than nudged one direction or the other. And that gave the process a lot of integrity too. So I think that was a great idea, and I really appreciate the community members who put so much time and energy into it. And obviously had a lot of buy in in the out of the outcome because it was, you know, they were, there was a lot of good consensus around those final decisions. So that makes me feel really confident in in the ultimate recommendation. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Janet.
Yeah, Scott. Um, yeah, I guess I was just listening to everybody talking. I I I never, we, we never saw any concerned citizens. You know, I never really heard of any or any. And I think that indicates a good health in the of the of the community as a whole, because there wasn't this. When you, when you do a boundary change like this, sometimes there's always concern that one school is going to be better than the other or something like that. And clearly, they just, everybody knew it was going to be the same, and we're all neighbors in this town and this community. And let's just make some boundaries and move on because they because everybody felt that that 2K5s is better than our than our current model. So it's just nice to see.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody have a question that we can answer for you?
Okay. Well, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And yeah, this will be our action later on in the meeting. So reminder to the public as well, if you have anything to say, you'll have a couple of chances here before we move our action. Okay, let's see. Next up, we have student reps. Maddie, are they? Yep.
We have Madison Manning and Grace should be coming in. I believe it's the right grace. It's the only grace, so.
Well, hi, Madison. Hi, Grace.
Hi. Hi. Sorry, I got like kicked out. So.
No.
Anyway, good evening. I am Grace Hernandez, and I'm the Silverton High School ASB Vice President.
And I'm Maddie Manning, the school board representative and diversity officer.
So to start off this month, Key Club is currently teaming up with Interact Club to organize a food drive from the 13th of March to the 20th.
Interact's club is also selling Willamette Valley pies for Easter. The profits of this fundraiser will go to buy water filters to send to my tomorrow.
Our car club is currently planning on having their first in-person meeting at Silverton High School on March 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Our FFA recently began working with their summer Marion County Fair animals. They plan on keeping up their monthly chapter meetings to prepare for upcoming competitions.
Our Future Business Leaders of America, or FDLA, has been keeping busy bringing home 10 first place trophies, five second place awards, and and a third place from their regional skills conference.
The SPIN Society has also been keeping busy. They have recently finished their fall show 4:00 p.m. by Jonathan Dorf. They are now preparing to host spring auditions for their spring performance.
National Honor Society recently put on a Reading Under the Stars event for Mark Twain Elementary School students. They've also been running a children's book drive for these students as well.
The Health Occupations Students of America Club has been working on sending out reliable COVID-19 vaccine information. Their next post will include information about the Johnson and Johnson COVID vaccine.
Each debate has wrapped up their season competitions. They have two students who will be moving on to compete in national qualifications.
Dan's team continues to practice and is recording a performance this Friday to submit as a competition piece.
Marching band is starting practice this week virtually as well as in-person outdoors at McGinnis Field.
Both sports seasons are off to a great start, and by the end of this week, we'll have all have all competed in their first game, match or event. Boys and girls soccer, volleyball, football, and cross country all will continue to compete this week and are excited to be back on the course, court, or field.
ASB celebrated Classified Staff Appreciation Week last week and recognized various classified staff members on our SHS Instagram page. We are also brainstorming a virtual Best Fox Ever show.
We just want to say again that we are so thankful for our classified staff at the high school and throughout the whole district. Thank you for having us and go Foxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving into our school and principal reports. And first up is Scott Mills with Kirsten Jorgensen.
Good evening. Oh, and I see my students on there as well. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Jorgensen. Hi, guys. Did Mason make it? Okay, hi, Mason. I'm going to try to share my screen. I've never done this on Zoom, but I think I can handle it. Um, one second here. All right. Do you see my Jaguar there? Jonathan, do you see the Jaguar screen?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, I am going to just touch base on a few things here. Let me get going about Scottsdale School. And then I've got some special guests. You guys can see they're ready to present, and they're really the highlight of the presentation. So I'll make my part kind of quick. I'm excited to report tonight. You know, we I usually like to report in September because there's so much excitement about starting the school year. And I feel a bit like right now it's September. We just had like the world's longest in-service week preparing for tomorrow, but we are really excited to bring kids back to the building. So the only thing different, I think, right now is like I told Scott before, usually we do like a popsicle event where we give kids popsicles. And we did that today, and we were giving out hot chocolate instead. So and the temperatures changed a little bit, but we're good. Um, so something I wanted to highlight in my presentation tonight was our community. Scottsdale's community has been through a lot this year. You know, the pandemic, of course, and then hit really hard by the wildfires. And, you know, in this August, September, we were switching, kind of pivoting to thinking we were doing hybrid to CDL. That was challenge. The wildfires hit and also another challenge in our community was hit hard. I noted there the community response and then the work with Global Empowerment Mission and the Brinker Brothers because that brought in over $20,000 to our community. And I mentioned that tonight because there was a ton of opportunities for staff to participate in stepping up and supporting the community by working in the community center, helping at the food bank and and being there. And that was a really great opportunity for us because at that point, we were all feeling very disengaged from each other, from the school, from our students. And we had an opportunity to connect with them in a different way than school, but in a way that meant a lot to all of us. So then we kind of moved out of the wildfire crisis and started planning. You know, kind of this, then we were back in the distance learning and then the hybrid the pivot to hybrid, sorry, lots of words, pivot to hybrid. Very exciting, but another change and and kind of a shift in what we were doing. But it's been really great. We had a community holiday drive-through event where our community put on, and we had over 121 vehicles that drove through to town. And there was hot chocolate and toys. Anybody under the age of 18 got a special wrapped gift. And another opportunity for our staff to connect with our students and families where they were supported that either donating toys or volunteering at that event. So lots of great events. Then the ice storm came, and our community also is impacted again. We actually still have families without, they all do have power, but many without internet and phones still. And then today we had a little surprise where we lost internet and phone at the school this afternoon. So it's just, you know, we just, I told Scott, we just keep rolling with it and and we'll and we'll get there. But keep the the focus in mind is bringing those kids in tomorrow. We also have our annual Scott's Mills PTC PTC auction, which is a huge event. Last year, they did it virtually and brought in $16,000 in a virtual auction. And they're planning a May 1st event based on kind of what they can do, but that's coming soon. So we're excited to keep some of that stuff going. Touching base on Scott's Mills and the strategic plan, I have some notes. I sent this in my report as well, but our, you know, focus is each student's on track to graduate every year. We want our eighth graders at or above grade level upon promotion. Today, we actually had a freshman come through the drive, the hot chocolate drive-through bragging about how great she did in math this year in high school, thanking Ms. Club for and her teachers for preparing her. So that was just really rewarding. Our star reading and math data is an important piece of this. We have a data team. It's taken a little bit of a hiatus through this virtual learning. It's a little bit different, but we're excited to get that back in place. And then our care team has continued to meet. We actually meet pretty much weekly to connect on some of our kids who have struggled with engagement during CDL. So keep being focused on that goal. Social emotional learning skills to navigate their world. We are PBIS school. We're in year six. We've continued to do a lot of PBIS activities to keep engaged and kids connected to our school community. We have a Playworks recess program, and we're really thankful Leslie sent out an email a couple of weeks ago, letting us know we're going to continue with some district supportive Playworks, which is great. We've seen huge benefits of that in our schools. So we're excited about that. Continuing with the SEL caring school community curriculum and then middle school leadership opportunities, community service and school-wide projects for our students. And then our school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. Our community members are very engaged either in asking us what we need, offering to help and providing some donations and in-kind support. We got a drinking fountain in our gym, which is super excited. That was a huge feat. I think it's been going since as long as I've been at Scottsdale's. It's been a dream of our staff and some parents. And we did get it kind of ironically last spring when we couldn't use drinking fountains and there was no students in the gym in the school. But we are excited to be able to use that as at least the water bill or water bottle filler park here soon. We do, when students were in person, we would do school cleanup days. We tried to do those monthly as well as a big one in August. So we look forward to doing that again when we when we're able. Right now, our focus is that smooth return to in-person hybrid instruction. We did the youth true survey a couple of weeks ago. So we're looking forward to those results, both the staff, students and parents. And then really our focus right now is meeting students where they are and how to prepare for not only the spring, but then being ready for the students in the fall. We've all had a challenging year. We know students have been at various engagement levels and what they're doing, and we want to meet their social emotional needs. And so we're really excited to have them back in the building to really gauge that and plan moving ahead. And that great picture down there is those are our students who are the stars of our orientation film that I have an email sent to the board here when we're done that has a has our film. So we're, that was very fun for them to do, and they they enjoyed posing there. And celebrations, we have lots to celebrate. It's been a hard year, but we've really tried to focus on the celebrations. Students coming back, the excitement in the building has just, it's been wonderful. We're going to continue connecting with our students and families. We have those numbers were probably last week, 51 students in our cohort A and 55 in cohort B. We're continuing to get some of the families who chose the homeschool route calling us saying, hey, we want to come back, which is really exciting. We like, we love to welcome them back. We've done our Jag Flag every Monday at 8:30 live virtually with our students, and that has really been the highlight for many of us. We get 50 to 60 kids every Monday joining all our staff. We celebrate students. It's just a really great, a great way to start our week. We will continue that when we're in hybrid. And then we've had lots of PBIS activities to focus on our community. We did a gratitude challenge in November, December prize wheel, February gratitude challenge. We had the hot chocolate drive-through today. And then our middle school, I have pictures here of Trevor Brown, one of our middle school kids, and then Helen Club, one of our middle school teachers. And knowing our middle school kids suffer a lot with the isolation and being home, they did a hot chocolate drive-through specific for them in December. And then they did a really fun Valentine's Day delivery. So you can see Helen's dressed up there in her Valentine's gear. And our middle school team and counselor went to all the middle school kids' homes, delivered them a little Valentine treat, which brought a lot of joy to them. So that was really neat. There's a picture of our Jag Flag. So that's the screen when we have our Jag Flag on Monday mornings. So the why, so the why the kids here to present now are going to be kind of the why of we're of why we're doing all this work is because they make it worth it. So I'm going to ask, I've got Trevor Brown, Mason and Nolan Sitchley, Connor and Frances Bab, and Emma Lar here to answer a couple of questions to talk to you a little bit about their experience. Are you guys on? All right. So we're going to start. The first question we had is what has been most challenging in learning from home? So we're going to start Trevor. What how what's been the most challenging?
For me this year, the most challenging from learning at home online is being, it's hard to contact teachers. Like it takes a little while to send an email and for them to receive it. And since I live up in a rural area, it's hard for Wi-Fi's here and there. It's spotty. And that way, it makes it harder to learn and do agenuity assignments or send emails.
Thank you, Trevor. Mason and Nolan, how about you guys?
Well, technically what ours was was it's kind of hard to like we it was kind of hard to like get onto meets and stuff.
All right. Thank you. Connor and Frances?
Yeah, what I found the most hard was not being able to talk to classmates. The a lot of things about school is getting to know people in your community. And it's really hard to contact other classmates. Like you see them all in meets all the time. And like you, you say a few sentences to each other, but you can't really have a conversation. And since they, you gotta talk about school since it's the school meet. And so it's pretty hard to talk to others from classmates, I guess.
Um, mine is staring at the screen all day is really hard for me because I really don't like staring at screens.
Me neither, Frances.
Also not seeing friends.
Yeah, thank you. How about you, Emma?
Um, what's challenging for me is there's, since we're out in the trees, we have bad internet and it's hard to stay focused because, oh, I want to go play. Oh, I'm gonna, I do this.
Thank you, Emma. And how about what what do you enjoy about learning from home, Trevor?
I enjoy being able to pace myself while doing agenuity or in Canvas for a high school math class I'm taking. And it's it's a lot easier to just go off once I'm done, and I can go off and have more time to do things on my own.
All right, thank you. How about Mason and Nolan?
Probably the morning meetings.
Yeah. Um, Frances and Connor?
I I enjoy being able to like, once I've done the schoolwork, I can go play outside or play a board game or tinker with my circuits or just play instead of being like reading or doing extra schoolwork. Because I really enjoy being home and being able to play stuff when I'm done with schoolwork or between meetings. Or between meetings and all sorts of stuff.
Francis, do you have something you enjoy about being home?
Eating lunch at home and staying with my family is what I like. To do.
Thank you. How about you, Emma?
Sorry, I'm used to being down low. What's really the only thing that's good for me is the flexible schedule. So.
Alright, thank you. And then what are you most looking forward to returning in school, Trevor?
I'm looking forward to being able to see my friends and doing sports. But it it's also kind of hard for me to see friends because not being in school has made me socially isolated. It's very hard for me.
Thank you. Mason and Nolan?
Everything.
Thank you. Me too. How about Francis and Connor?
I'm really excited to see my friends again and be able to talk to them and like show them things. I have like lots of pictures that I've been drawing. That I want to show.
Very cool.
I am excited about going to school is that I could get to see my teacher in person.
Yeah, that's exciting, huh? And Emma, how about you?
What's exciting about going back is seeing all my friends and my teachers in person. So.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys staying on. I know it was a late night and some of you have school tomorrow. So you better get to bed, huh? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
Yep. So like I said, that's the highlight of the presentation, those guys.
Thanks, Kirsten.
Thank you very much. You have any questions or? No? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Alright. Well, on to our second school, which is Butte Creek and Kevin Palmer.
Take me just a moment to promote everyone.
Alright, good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Palmer at Butte Creek and I have to say I sure agree with Francis from Scott's Mills about that screen time. It's tough after a long day. So we're going to go ahead and start with our kids from Butte Creek. And then I'll, we'll send them off to bed and I'll finish the rest of my report. So. Let's see, we have Logan with us. We have Sarah with us.
Don't ask this on Kevin, sorry.
What's that?
None of the rest of your students are on.
Oh, no. Okay. Well, Logan and Sarah, you are going to be it for us tonight then. So you'll carry, carry the whole load here. Alright, just a little intro. Logan and Sarah, as well as Kaila Buckley, Lily Miller and Callie Costa, they are. They, they signed up for. The journalism elective with Mrs. Emily Rayo in our middle school and they were the only five students to sign up for that elective. Until just recently, we, we have a few more that have jumped in here at the semester break. And our school has always published a weekly newsletter called The Little Bits. Every single week for the last many years and this year with with all of the electronic communication. Going out from school and classrooms to families, we decided to just pause the the little bits for a while. But then Logan and Sarah and their classmates and and Mrs. Rayo. They decided they would like to revive it, but in a different format. And so as a monthly expanded newsletter with more like human interest stories and cool things and lengthier features. Than just kind of the one or two page kind of quick hit little bits. And and these guys are awesome. So they're providing this great service to our school community. And and our families love it. It's just really interesting to read and they are great writers. And so. They're going to introduce themselves to you and just tell you just a little bit that I've got a couple of questions that they're going to answer. So Sarah. You are the eighth grader here, so you you will go ahead and start. So introduce yourself, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Currents. I'm in eighth grade and I've gone to Butte Creek since first grade.
Logan?
I'm Logan Byer. I'm in sixth grade and I'm new to Butte Creek, but I really like it here.
Great. Alright, you guys, I get just a few questions for you. We'll, we'll go back to Sarah. What's your favorite subject in school, Sarah, and why?
I don't actually have a favorite subject. I like, I like all my classes.
Your teachers will love that answer. That's awesome. Logan?
My favorite class is probably math.
Excellent. Mr. Ustleman will appreciate hearing that. So guys, tell us just real quick, why did you choose journalism for your elective class? And and how do you pick what topics you write on? Because there, there's such a great variety of of features that you guys put in. Tell us about that.
Sarah? I chose journalism because out of all the elective choices, that fit me the best. And some of my topic ideas is just like some things that I want to know myself. And sometimes the topics Mrs. Rayo suggests to us.
Excellent. Thanks, Sarah. How about you, Logan?
At first, I wanted to go into art instead of journalism, but. I decided that journalism was a better suit for me and I like to write a lot. Yeah.
Logan, that is the perfect segue into our next question. We did not set this up this way. So way to go, young man. You're, you're all, all five of you, you're all very talented writers. You're very engaging. So what do you like to write about in your free time? Logan, let's start with you on that one, since you've got us right into this. What do you like to write about?
I don't always write in my free time, but when I, when I do, sometimes I just write little stories that I make up myself. And I like to write about those, but journalism, it's nice to write about something that's actually happening in the world.
Definitely. Cool. Thanks, Logan. Sarah, how about you?
If I do write in my free time, sometimes I write poems, fictional pieces. Depends on what I'm feeling at the time.
Very good. So guys, after a whole year, it's incredible, but it's been a whole year. After a whole year in distance learning, what's on your mind as we get ready to return to campus really soon? Sarah?
Being able to see my friends and being able to ask questions to teachers in person.
We can't wait for that. Thanks, Sarah. Logan, how about you?
I kind of have been thinking about for when we go back. Being able to meet new people since I'm new and. Being able to talk to the teachers and get clarification without having to like email or talk over a Google Meet. Which will be nice.
That will be nice for sure. You guys, thank you very much for being here tonight. We appreciate it hearing from you and we love the work you're doing. To to just make Butte Creek a better place and provide service through through doing the little bits each month. And you're just awesome people too. So thanks, you guys. We'll let you go or you can stay on. You can listen to my report. You can watch the rest of the board meeting if you want. Or you can go about your evening. Thanks, Logan. Thanks, Sarah. They are awesome. Thanks, you guys for. Allowing us to to bring the kids on too. They're, they're, they're great kids. So now I'll kind of get into to what I wanted to talk about for Butte Creek a little bit here. You know, talking to you guys at the board, I cannot imagine how many people. You hear from and have heard from over the last year and it's crazy that that we are just right at that year in this. Distance learning mode, but you know, parents, students, educators, you you got to hear from so many people. There's probably. Not a lot that I can share with you that you haven't already heard by now. But you know, with, with so many new things to learn and and with the constant pivots, just all the time. We have asked our staff, our kids, our parents who are the home learning coaches now to. They've got to do more than than ever before. They've got to work harder than they ever would imagine to work, but. I'll, I'll tell you this though, with with all of that, I want to say that, you know, while this hasn't been the ideal school year that we would have chosen. I still think, you know, we have a better than a lot who who face way more difficult challenges, greater hardships than we do. So. You know, all in all. You know, we're, we're pretty happy here. We're going to be a lot happier when we get our kids back in the building, but but we're doing okay because everybody's coming together. The partnership between our, our home and school has been very inspiring to me and I think to to everybody in our community. And I can tell you guys one thing for sure, our kids are learning and they're growing and that's true from K to eight. Absolutely without a doubt in my mind. And so it's just going to keep going. We get them back here in person. I I like to, when I talk about Butte Creek, you guys, I always like to to say and let people know that. Out here, just about every single school-wide initiative or activity that that goes on in this building. Is directed by our PBIS team or Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Team. We run everything through that lens at Butte Creek, if it's a school-wide initiative at all. And PBIS typically meets twice a month during normal times, but this year. We have met literally many weeks, as many as five times a week, some, some weeks every single day in the morning. To to get things done. And that was especially when we, we were beginning our Lippi. Programs or Lippi classes all the way back in October. And then from there, our PBIS team has taken on all planning and prep efforts for hybrid instruction. So. Could not do what we do without that, that group of people. That includes classified staff, teachers, specialists, me. It it's a, a large group and a very hardworking group from our staff. So speaking of Lippi classes, I I wanted to talk about that just a little bit. We started back in October. With ten middle school kids and we started with the, our oldest kids because we, we, we knew they were suffering. The social and emotional. Issues that they were facing were were very great and we felt like we were going to start our Lippi programs with them. And to bring along with them, we, we, we also started with ten younger kids, primary kids. Most of whom were the younger siblings of the middle school kids we were bringing in because. Many of those middle school kids, they were the home learning coaches for their younger brothers and sisters. And if they weren't there at home, their little brothers and sisters, the the siblings, we're not going to have a, a learning coach there. So we, we brought them all in and then we went from there. And who taught these kids? Well, we started out with our specialists, our title one teacher, ELD teacher, counselor. And classified staff who were on site every day out here at Butte Creek. And then after that, after a couple of months came our K three teachers. And those folks, they would teach their online classes every single morning and then hustle out to campus. To teach their, their own classroom of students here in the afternoon. And that, I mean, that is going way above and beyond when you're doing both like that. They did it because they wanted to do it and they felt the need to do it. And so we made it happen out here. And by the time K five Lippi ended. In, in, in February, on February nineteenth, right around the ice storm time, we were serving a hundred and sixteen students at Butte Creek every single week. Nearly half of our enrollment were, were attending in Lippi classes between the morning groups and the afternoon class, a hundred and sixteen students weekly. And you know, not only, you know, it was a great having the kids here. Great for all of us, but what we learned from months of of running Lippi classes has informed every step of the way for our hybrid transition. And that's true of all of our schools. You know, it's, it's, we're all learning from every single thing we do in the Lippi programs and that's, that's helping us be ready. For the kids to come in this week for orientation and beyond. So we're ready to go. We're excited about it. We've got Wednesday, Thursday. This week, our full day orientations for kindergarten through fifth grade kids at Butte Creek before they start. On their regular rotation next week. And then we'll also have our middle school kids coming in on the seventeenth and the eighteenth. For a full day of orientation and those are exactly regular school days here from start to finish, eight thirty to three o'clock. Every step of the way on those orientation days will be exactly like a, a normal school day here at Butte Creek. So we can't wait for those kids to get here. And so we're doing all we can to get the fam, the students and families ready. Including the welcome back video starring Butte Creek students and staff and. And produced and narrated by our middle school math teacher Dylan Ustleman. And the Spanish version narrated by our eighth grade student Chris Leon. And they did a great job. I think you guys have seen that or you, you've, you've had it and a lot of other schools are doing videos too. And so. They're not only fun. But they're informative. And one thing I, I do have to give a shout out, kind of credit where credit is due. For the kind of the formatting of the video and some of the scripting and and stuff that we were able to then kind of take and adapt for Butte Creek. But I want to give a thanks to, to former Butte Creek teacher Corinne Johnson. Who is, is now a, a principal in Malala and. And she kind of created the first version for, for, for her school over there with her children. In the starring role and and sent that over to me and everything and. And then helped us with some of the, you know, layouts and everything. And then we just kind of adapted for Butte Creek. So. Want to thank Corinne for that. You know, we share. That's what we all do, right? We, we, we share our best stuff and and go from there. But in that, in the, in the, the video, and and this is something that we're just really focusing on out here, you know, there are only. For, for the students, three things they have to remember, three things only. To come back and be safe and successful in hybrid. We're calling them our three keys. Mask, distance and hand washing. And we just keep pounding on that because if they can cover those things. The adults will take care of the rest of the stuff and we're going to, we'll be open and we'll stay open by, by my, being mindful of those things. So the three keys, that's our focus, you guys. I did want to mention just a couple of other things that are kind of, one, one is related to Butte Creek. And that is just a shout out to our parent teacher team, the PTT. That always does great work for us out here, always supports us in every way we can imagine through fundraising. Classroom support for supplies, materials, whatever teachers need to help their students. They ran the Fox Toberfest event this year, a taste of, a taste of Oktoberfest. And and kind of a welcome comeback after the wildfires and everything, maybe for the community. And they provided Christmas gifts. Kirsten talked about a drive-through event. They had, we did similar, a lot of schools did. And they made sure every student received a package of, of gifts from them. A warm fleece blanket, hot chocolate mix, Christmas ornaments and books to read. And for the older kids, gift certificate to books in time in Silverton. So that's another big focus we've got, whether it's PTT or PBIS team out here. Is to support our local businesses as we try to bring in things to help our staff and students and families. We like to do that locally. We do hope to, to hold the annual Eddie Willig Memorial Track Meet. We, we hope it would be the thirty. Third year, I believe. We had to skip last year, of course, but this is the, the K eight schools for the middle school kids. We started at a monitor. Back in nineteen eighty-nine. And if, if, if everything rolls right metric wise and and you know, all the restrictions and conditions. That would be a dream come true for us to be able to, to have the eight K eight schools that participate down there. On the SHS track, having a, a great day of track and field events in late May. So. Keep our fingers crossed on that and and hope everything goes well. And if so, if we're able to, we will pull that off. Not related to Butte Creek at all, trap team at the high school, we are in our fourth year of trap shooting. Um, not related to Buick Creek at all, uh trap team uh at the high school, uh we are in our fourth year of trap shooting. Thanks, thanks to your support uh and and approval of that program, and we are uh estimating forty. Trap-shooting athletes this year on our roster, which would be the largest uh we have ever been, starting in two thousand eighteen with ten students. Uh, and those guys are seniors now, and most of them have stayed with the program, so that gets started right after spring break. And and we're looking forward to that as always. One last thing, um, you know, we're we're, like I said, we're ready for our Bobcats to be back here live in person. Um, thanks to our community, our staff, our 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 teachers, our classified, our parents. Uh, everybody that's that's helped pull through together through all of this, but. A final last special shout-out to our our tireless custodian, Rafael Cervantes. Because he has moved more classroom furniture in the last month or so, tables, desks, chairs, and he's moved them out. And then sometimes he's moved the same things right back in again as we've changed kind of our our our. Uh advisory planning and our blueprint as we we figure out what can actually work that we thought maybe wouldn't work at first. And so I said, Rafael, you know, can you move those round tables back in the kindergarten room, please, for us that you just took out two weeks ago? Absolutely, he's on it with a smile uh on his face and and just wants to help out, so. Uh, anyway, guys, ending on a a high note, that's that's what I have for Buick Creek. If you've got any questions, I I'd be happy to answer those. But uh, thanks for having me and 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 uh, I'm glad to join you.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions or comments for Kevin?
I just wanted to to make a note, um Lori and I had a chance along with uh. Um, Scott and some of his team last week to visit Buick Creek, and I just have to say, it was so great, that building, Kevin, is just warm and welcoming and organized. Like, by this, you know, down to the skin of its teeth, I mean, it is just, everything is. It's, you can tell the building is just vibrating with energy, waiting for kids to come back, and so I just wanted to commend you and your staff for working. I I can't imagine how hard um to get that that building ready, and um, you know, same is same is true of the other schools that we looked at last week as well, but. Um, I had not had the opportunity yet to go through Buick Creek, and so um for me, it was a real treat, so thank you.
Thank you, Janet, appreciate that. They they've worked very hard out here, for for sure. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. It's us revved up.
Thanks, good night.
Okay, well, item eight and nine are going to go really fast because both Michelle's have contacted us indicating they weren't going to be able to make it tonight. So, uh, we're not going to have either of the two association updates, which moves us straight into our first public comment. And Maddie, is is Debbie, had Debbie still monitoring email? I'm unclear if she still was or not.
Jonathan, we have one uh in the queue that uh.
Okay.
Has reached out to uh.
Oh, she's saying.
To Matt, to Matt, Maddie and I through through Debbie, uh, we have Chuck Chuckittoff, who would like to speak this evening.
Okay, um, I'm going to read the intro and then uh, then we'll go ahead with Chuck, and then if anybody else wants to, please email. Uh, well, anybody you see on the panel is probably, if if you can, you know, if you uh email me, I'll try to look. If you email. Uh, Steve, maybe he can try to look, I don't, I'm unclear if Debbie's able to uh let us know at this point. So, we are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comments is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time. Or remarks to five minutes, and a second public comment will appear later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of the meeting. And Jennifer serves as our timekeeper and will uh give you a thirty-second warning and a times-up indication accordingly.
Chuck is the only person that I've received um an email, so I'm going to promote him now.
All right, thanks.
Chuck, you have the floor.
Am I, oh, I unmuted myself. Okay, great, uh, thank you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk very briefly about three things. First is the. Uh, impact of the storm on trees at the um on school district property. I I think the. Number of people like me would like to have an explanation of why some trees were cut down without first talking to an arborist. And also want to know what's planned for remediation to the damage to the Oak Grove by Mark Twain's school. Caused by a heavy machinery that was in there cutting down trees and removing limbs, um that really contrary to what a good arborist would do. Um, the second thing is uh just a question, um, um, it's, you know, the census is delayed, but it is coming out, and I'm wondering. What the timeline and process is going to be for the school district to redraw the boundaries as a result of the decennial census. Um, I understand is, in the ten years ago, the district used the population center at PSU to help run the numbers by census tract. Um, to redesign the or modify the boundaries, and so. I'm not sure whether that is in your budget or timeline, I think some of us are waiting for that, then, um. Then last, I'm I'm a Senate-confirmed member of the Task Force on Universal Healthcare. And one of the things that we're doing as task force members, as we're studying and putting together a plan for the legislature to consider. Adopting is talking to community groups and um some members talked to the um. Corvallis School Board, and they unanimously approved a a resolution in support of universal healthcare. Um, I've sent that to you. I I think if there's a, there's a lot of lessons from COVID, and one of the, I think one of the lessons is that. Healthcare matters not just to the individuals, but to other parts of the community in which those individuals participate. Um, and so I think it's in the school districts um. Uh, purview and interest to support uh more universal care and universal health insurance as well as access. And so I would encourage you to look at that, unanimously adopted Corvallis Resolution that I sent. Um, and consider similar action um by you all, so that the legislature knows that. Um, it's not just healthcare advocates looking for it, that other people have recognized the impact of COVID and whatnot, so, that's it.
Right, well, thanks, Jeff.
Welcome.
Um, Maddie, any other folks that have contacted us yet?
I have, I have one. Debbie says there's nothing so far, other than Chuck.
Oh, okay. Right, uh, well, we do have a second public comment, so I'm going to move us along. Uh, we're going to jump into our administrative. And staff report, starting Steve and our community's report.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'm actually going to start with my third item. Uh, on financial report tonight, item eleven C, which has to do with the amendment to our original. Building lease, uh, this actually says Brown Street on eleven C, but the action item accurately reflects as Water Street. It's on the corner of Brown and Water, so that was my fault. I've attached two documents there, uh, excuse me, the the documents are listed in the uh. In the action item down at the bottom under fourteen B, so. Wanted to bring the amendment to you tonight for uh review and and approval. Uh, it's a slightly over a page document. We originally, per the approved SIA plan uh one year ago. Uh, started to uh make make plans for building space for the Sequoia Falls Academy. And then shortly after approval, the the budget fell out of the. The floor with the, when when the pandemic started, and we were looking at a major shortfall, and we went from a three-million-dollar SIA allocation to zero. Then, as we hit summer, we found out uh with the improved improved budget situation that we would receive a third of our original. Allocation, one million dollars, and we moved forward with the Sequoia Falls part of the SIA plan. So, the building there at uh Brown and Water that had been starting to be remodeled uh for for a potential lease partner. We obviously had to stop when we found out we weren't getting anything, and then when the partial funding came back, we. Uh, re-explored that option, and it was still available, and it was a build-to-suit situation. You could see the uh first document attached was the original three-year basic lease agreement that we signed back in October. But due to the uh the building modification specifically required for student use. The 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 cost for that is was was more than a typical uh build-to-suit situation, and they also had a couple of uh delays due to the pandemic. Uh, which changed their financing arrangements, so uh it's typical in a lease scenario that. Uh, the lease would cover the costs to uh modify the building. So, they came back to us and asked for a five-year lease rather than a three-year lease. With slight increases each year, but the biggest change was that they were wanting a um. Termination fee to be paid if we terminated early, so after year three or after year four. They came back with uh fifty thousand dollar and a twenty-five thousand dollar scenario, so fifty thousand if terminated after year three. Twenty-five thousand if terminated after year four. We negotiated and agreed upon. We have not signed this yet, we're asking for your approval tonight, a thirty thousand dollar fee if terminated after year three and fifteen thousand dollars. If terminated after year four. You can see that the monthly lease amount is five, about five thousand dollars, and and increases slightly each year per per month. I feel very uh comfortable with this recommendation because I feel that even if funding were to go away, um, two or three years down the road. Uh, we would need this building in our district operations, whether it be for Sequoia Falls Academy or for our youth transition programs. Uh, we have uh a Y, a YTP, or excuse me, a uh youth, a youth transition program that we have down that's. Housed in the basement of Kennedy High School that we uh joined with Cascade School District and Man Angel School District. They use that building there. They were already looking for addition, for for other spaces as well, so we have plenty of uh. We'd have plenty of opportunity to use that. It's a, it's a great location, being close to Silverton Middle School and the district office. We are uh getting uh fiber installed in there, uh joined to our fiber system that we have for for internet connectivity here in the school district, so. We just feel it makes sense, and that if something were to change with student investment account or state budget, that. That's something that we would, we would build sixty thousand dollars into our budget to do, uh even if we get to year four and five and and something changed, so. I wanted to explain that to you, and uh. It it's it's a situation we've been working on the last several weeks to try to to get that final agreement uh rectified. Right now, uh, construction is slated to uh be complete in early April, so. Um, the Sequoia Falls Academy has actually been meeting in the church across from the tennis court, and we're very thankful for that opportunity. But we're also very excited for them to be able to move into uh to this building. Are there any uh questions on on that before I move on to the rest of my presentation tonight? Janet.
Eve, did you say that the 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 remodel and construction costs for upgrading the facility for students are reflected here? I, I don't, I can't imagine, I don't see them, I don't think.
No, just that for the bank to affirm their 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 financing due to delays and additional costs to build the suit for our needs. The only way to guarantee uh that that financing to finish. To be, for them to be able to finish their work.
Oh, I see.
Was to add this, this, you know, fourth and fifth year and uh some sort of security if we were to back out before the end of year five. The owner of this building actually owns that whole other uh complex where the Anytime Fitness went in. And she continued to to uh the the construction on on that building. And 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 got that uh business operating, but uh obviously the timing of what was going to be done. In in the order in which it was to to be done, and with the the construction delays, everything kind of changed with the with the financing structure for the owner.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Shelley.
Yeah, um, has there been any discussion about investing in the building to purchase it? Instead of renting it and paying all that money, and then even when the SIA money runs out in. Four to five years, you're still going to budget for it, so I, it it, I'm I'm more of a person who wants to. More of an investment person to buy the building and not, you know, rent it and put, you know, let's give it to a mortgage. So, was there any discussion about that?
Uh, Jennifer, can you uh refresh, refresh us on what some of those original conversations were, and if that was. An option? I I don't recall where those original discussions uh from last summer went. Are you on? She might need to be promoted to a panel, and she said she could uh answer a few questions. She had some original conversations with.
Okay.
With the representative, so we'll see if Maddie can uh promote her here.
I'm sorry, I was reading an email. Who do I need to?
Could you promote Jennifer Hannan for us, Maddie, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
She's being brought in now.
Hi, Jennifer. Shelley was just asking about the uh, what the options were, if any, on the uh potential purchase of that. Of that property back when when we originally started talking with them.
Yes, so the building, I, it was a shell of a building, so it needed everything redone, plumbing, wiring. Flooring, walls, et cetera, and so that was not a project we felt the school district could take on at that time. But there has been conversations with the owner about an option to purchase after year three or year five. Um, another barrier to being able to purchase that building or the discussion of purchasing it right away was, you know, another building for. Custodial Maintenance Department to maintain um at this time, as well as. Tying up uh enough of the SIA money that we wouldn't have allowed for other um activities or expenditures. Within the plan to move forward, but certainly, um, we have had multiple discussions with the broker and the owner of the building about the district's interest in. Purchasing that building down the road.
Okay.
Before I call, another uh part of that would have been, thank you very much, Jennifer. The fact that we're going through the long-range facility master-planning process right now, and. You know, ultimately, that will probably lead to a bond in the next two or three years, and so. If that building is part of the plan, then that could really fit in in that three, four, five-year window in terms of a potential. Purchase, maybe, maybe within a bond, if if that's what the board decides to do to do. Uh, that would always seem to to work potentially as well.
Okay, has that been brought up to the Long Range Facilities Committee about that idea?
That building has not been discussed, and I think we need to add it to the.
Yeah.
Next thing, because we just started getting into conceptual ideas about a new Silverton Middle School and just.
Right.
Campus in general, so that should be brought into it, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah, okay, yeah, good, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification on purchase instead of renting for so many years. Yeah, better investment there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any good questions? Any any other questions for Steve on this item?
Okay, so thank you. I'm going to move on to just the monthly financial report for the month. Ending February twenty-eighth. And I have so much to cover, and I'm trying not to ramble on forever here, but I'm going to go ahead, if that's okay, Jonathan, and share. Share my screen.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's start with this. Everyone see the financial statement, yes? Okay. Okay, uh, just just as a reminder too, sometimes it comes up a little bit small on the agenda when you uh when you click on the link. But if you hover at the bottom, you can go ahead and uh and and zoom in further on any particular page. So, uh, this is the revenue page, uh. The bottom line with the financial report is uh revenue is still running slightly ahead of projection. And expenses are running lower than projection projected by over three percentage points and. If you look on page three, it's running lower than last year's expenses year-to-date by one point seven million dollars. The expenses will contend continue to trend that way, revenue will most likely end up. Below forecast because we just had our updated twenty twenty-one. State School Fund estimates, so our March, April and May. State School Fund payments will be less than we've had each month so far this year and that's because the second quarter ADM has been taken into account. Our budget called for a slight slight increase in enrollment for twenty twenty-one, which is what we've been getting paid on, but. Now we our payments will be reverted back to what our nineteen twenty enrollment was, which was slightly less. But of course, we are being held harmless against where our enrollment really is at for this year for this year. Uh, so we'll have a slight adjustment there as well as our transportation grant, so we're paying a lot less of transportation, but. Our revenue that's tied into the State School Fund also has been adjusted. Uh, to reflect less payment, so we we get reimbursed seventy percent of whatever we pay, so. Between that and earnings on investments being lower than than budgeted, we should come in less, so we're running ahead, but we should drop a little bit. Behind expenses though, you can see. Year-to-date expenditures are running uh well below for well 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 projected based on a five-year history. And you can see right up here where I have my cursor, the expenses for uh this year. Versus last year, you can actually see that. Salaries for the prior year-to-date is more than current year-to-date and that's even with. Uh, cost of living and step increases, so um that's just because we've had vacancies. That we didn't rehire and you know, uh, the and 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 that. Items related to COVID that that resulted in uh less FTE this year, so. The reason that that now flip-flop, that looked the opposite way. Last month, but the reason that changed is because. Last February, February of two thousand twenty is the where we had the retro pay for. The teachers after we settled in January twenty twenty, we settled the contract and had the retro pay, so. You could see now that the February year-to-date exceeds. Where we're at this year. For salaries and then you can see the big one is the purchase services where our student transportation costs. Uh, reside, so that's that and lack of substitute. Teacher costs and classified substitute costs are the two major players in that. And then page three. This is a great page because it shows where you're at to to current year to budget, but it also shows. What the prior year total was, but also what your prior year-to-date was versus your current year-to-date and that's where you can see. Our revenues are one point four million dollars ahead of last year at this time and again. That's because we went from a forty-nine percent to a fifty-one percent State School Fund. Ratio for for this year. And then you can see the expenses last year at this time, year-to-date through February, February, we were at twenty-five point seven million dollars. And this year we're just below twenty-four million dollars, so. That's a, you know, trends that are going both in favorable directions, again. Some of that sadly due to our situation with the pandemic, but it is giving us the opportunity going into. Some uncertain budgeting moving forward is giving us a chance to. Build our our ending fund balance up some this year compared to to where we were, so. Hopefully that uh that all makes sense, uh, we are just really, March is really heavy budget building month. Uh, teachers and departments working on their budgets and. It's tricky to know where to go with. With the budget because uh. The odd number years are always tricky because you're in the legislative session, we're still waiting on the co-chair's budget. The first State School Fund estimate was based on the nine point one billion dollar governor's allocation. Uh, they are projecting a forty-nine fifty-one split again, so we'll revert back to forty-nine percent of SSF next year. But the trickier part of it has to do with this enrollment piece that I've been talking about. Uh, for many months in a row now, I'm not hearing anything in particular about a hold harmless. I really believe at this point that, you know, even though it's being. Kicked around that we can't plan on it and I think we need to. In terms of enrollment projection, probably look at something in between where we're at now and where we were. And I'm actually having principals create uh two different scenarios. And by the time we get to the end of March and into. First couple of weeks of April, we'll make a decision as to which we which which way we will lean with the proposed budget, we're hoping over the next. Four to six weeks we'll learn more and. Just see where we go from there, every school is a little bit different in that scenario too. Uh, some schools are affected more than others and so we have to look look at each each school as well. So what what ties along with that is the. State quarterly economic forecast. And. It's pretty neat because that was prepared by our very own Chris Allenak. Uh, Janet's husband, the legislative revenue officer, so. I've linked that on the agenda as well and I really love this document and Janet, please tell Chris that we love it. Seven-page summary and what I really like about it is that uh. These little boxes, uh especially on page one, it talks about new facts compared to the last. Uh, forecast and he has some on some other pages as well and it makes it real uh reader-friendly, so. Please take a look at this if you have it, uh, the overall news um is that. It was just Morgan Allen from COSA kind of described it as a as a, just kind of a relief, you know, it wasn't. Anything significant either good or bad, the revenue for. The night, the rest of the nineteen twenty-one biennium rose slightly from the from the forecast of November. The revenue for twenty-one twenty-three went slightly down compared to the forecast in November. We're still looking to recover over the next three to four biennium compared to where we were pre-pandemic, but. Nothing, you know, changed for the bad, so. I also liked Morgan's comments from some key takeaways is that. The economy was was proving more resilient. Income excluding direct federal aid has returned to pre-pandemic levels. Lower income households continue to struggle unfortunately. Growth stalled over the winter as expected, but the state is set for rapid improvement. To date, the revenue losses in the current recession pale in comparison to Oregon's recent experiences. And job losses over the past year match the worst of the Great Recession, yet revenue declines are much less severe. So I think those are some real uh. Some some key key points to the forecast, so I think that uh Chris's seven-page summary really. Um, again, is a a nice way to look at it and at least we have that. Positive news and then we'll see. What the co-chairs come out with and what the legislative discussions uh do in terms of a number. And we will. You know, again, probably the biggest thing would be that revenue or excuse me, the enrollment piece. So. So that's the update. Uh, tomorrow, we have our second finance work group meeting, uh Jonathan and Janet. We'll talk more about the budget. Where we stand as well as the next topic on the list, which is the pension obligation bond. Opportunity. I saved this for last because it's the most complex, it's simple yet complex all at the same time. And we have uh between now and the April twelfth board meeting to consider. This uh possibility. And that is to for the board to either adopt a resolution or not. And even if we do adopt a resolution, it will work similarly to the general obligation bond refinance that we did last year where we. The board adopted a resolution and then it, the process actually stopped a couple of times before we actually. Had everything set just right in terms of rates and margins and we refinanced actually in September, which was long after the resolution was passed. So I can tell you that uh there's a lot to consider, but um we have over a month until a a resolution would have to be passed. Just to proceed and the the date by which that we actually have to make a decision as to whether we're going to do this or not is June fifteenth. But there's a lot of work that would have to be done uh leading into that, so. I'm not going to do a deep dive on this this evening because there's a lot of materials, uh you can see that I have three. Three uh attachments, we actually had a meeting last Wednesday, a three-hour meeting with Piper Sandler. Uh, Carol Samuel did a very detailed presentation, there's actually uh thirty school districts that are considering this and. This is actually quite a bit different than a general obligation bond refinance where. That was something where it's simply like a refinancing a home. Get a better interest rate. The amount of time you have. By the what the rate savings you have, you're gonna save enough money to make it worth it, which we did, we hit a an excellent treasury rate. And we're saving one point three million dollars over seven years, the last seven years of that. That's that's a, that's for sure, we don't have to wonder about that, that is. Uh, guaranteed at this point, but in terms of a pension obligation bond, this is different, it's not without risk. It is a situation where we, uh, like any uh employer. That's in the PERS system. Have po- we own part of the liability, the unfunded liability that the system has. Right now, our part of that uh system liability is thirty-five million dollars and that's already. On our books, uh, on the government-wide financial statement per what's required on on our audit report, which is why we have a negative net position. So the premise of a pension obligation bond is to. Uh, do a bond offering, it's a taxable taxable offering, taxable bond sale. And uh, another key difference here is that. We we go in with other school districts as a pool. Whereas with the general obligation bond or a general obligation bond refinance, we go in on our own, we're rated on our own. In this situation, we would go in with a pool of school districts, in this case, it could be up to thirty school districts. And uh, we we go through the process, sell the bonds and we we borrow at a certain rate. Give that money to PERS right now and set up a side account. To pay off our portion of the uh unfunded actuarial liability. Then, if there's a gamble involved because you, over the twenty or twenty-five-year borrowing period, whichever. Term the group decides to utilize. You must outperform your true total interest cost uh to to save money. So, because PERS will take that money and invest it like they do, you know, the rest of the fund and you get a performance based on that side account, so. The good news is uh PERS and OSBA have helped school districts do this for twenty years. And this is the best interest environment, interest rate environment there's ever been in the twenty years, as it sits right now. As we know, a lot can change in the next few years, in fact. Both the ten and thirty-year treasury rates have risen a bit in the last couple of months, but they're still historically low. So right now, they've created a scenario by which. Uh, districts would borrow at a total interest cost of three point five percent, right now we'd probably get in at about three percent. Most of these offerings have been four, five, five and a half percent. In fact, the Silver Falls School District participated in pension obligation bonds in two thousand three. And two thousand four. The rates at that time, the total interest costs were five point seven three percent in two thousand three and five point four nine in two thousand four. At the time, the district in two thousand three borrowed thirteen point two million dollars and in two thousand four, three point three million dollars. And those are still active today and I believe we have eight or nine years left on that, so. We were with a total of forty-five school districts in two thousand three and twenty-one school districts in two thousand four. The good news is those have worked out well, uh, as they sit right now, the district has saved money. And I'll point to the slides where um our analysis shows how we're doing there and what what the projection would be if we if we. Uh, participated now. So like I said, uh, with a with a pension obligation bond refinance, you really are just getting a, you know, are you. Can you can you borrow at a better rate, you know, paying less interest back and then it's done. This is different, you're getting a better rate, but then you're you have to. You have to kind of worry about the performance over the next twenty years. So, I was gonna point to a a few slides here, uh, just just to kind of, there's a lot to look at and the plan right now is to. Have a a representative from Piper Sandler, I'm not sure it'll be uh Carol, it might be Lauren McMillan. Uh, she says she is available on the twenty-second, I'm not sure if the work session will be on the twenty-second or twenty-ninth, I'm sure we can get someone for either date. And the 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 plan would be to have uh the representative present for thirty minutes. On the presentation, which is the. Second attachment and then also go over the third attachment, which which is actually the third attachment is is our specific analysis that they ran and it's eight pages. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen to the presentation really quick, but the general presentation. And they would present and do fifteen, twenty minutes of Q and A, so uh we would want the first forty-five minutes of that meeting to be dedicated to that, so we could be. Provide more information and education on how this works. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things, this is the slide that you saw quite a bit when we were considering the pension obligation bond refinance. This shows the history of both the ten and thirty-year treasury rates, so you could see. Where we hit here in September-ish of twenty twenty. And this is the ten-year rate here and this is the thirty-year rate, so you could see how well we did and then you can see they've been creeping up recently, but they're still. Historically low, this is on page five of the presentation. On page eight, or excuse me, page seven of of the presentation, you can see the complete history. Of pension obligation bond issues from two thousand one to two thousand eighteen. We were here for series two thousand three, school district pool and two thousand four, school district pool. The only issue that's losing money. Is the series two thousand seven. Eight school districts that borrowed October two thousand seven, right before the Great Recession. And PERS lost twenty-seven percent. So early returns matter. There, even though they've had mostly positive returns since then, they haven't been able to make it up. So, and they're projected to actually come out on the losing side. So that's a history of the offerings, page eight. Excuse me, page nine, very interesting. The forty-nine-year average rates of return in PERS from nineteen seventy to two thousand eighteen is ten point six percent. The average rate of return between two thousand four four and uh side accounts between two thousand four and two thousand fifteen were eight point one six percent. The one-year earning earning through the end of January this year is eight point two percent, but this shows a year-by-year history. Right now, the assumed earnings rate for PERS is seven point two percent, which has crept down from what used to be eight percent. And that's just to help the system. And the last one I was gonna show you on this presentation is. All interested districts uh help pay for Echo Northwest to do a. Initial analysis on success probability, this was back in late summer, early fall. And this shows what, and I think they run like twenty thousand scenarios in a Mon- Monte Carlo simulation, as they call it. You can see at interest rates, total interest cost of two point five, three point five and four point five percent. With all, and Lauren will be able to explain this a little bit more, you can see what the probability of success is. With all, and Lauren will be able to explain this a little bit more. You can see what the probability of success is here, which. As Carol says, is the best she's ever seen in twenty years. So obviously, past history is not a predictor of future success. And there is risk, but I believe that this is something that. While rates are still historic lows, that we should seriously consider, knowing that we have time to to. To back out if if, you know, I think we would want to set a rate maximum. And uh so, like I said, we'll 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 dive into this a little more tomorrow, Jonathan and Jan in our work group meeting. We'll talk a lot more about this at the board work session and even more uh obviously bef- you know, making a decision in April. Uh I'll just show you a couple of things real fast on our specific. Analysis. So this is the eight page analysis. It's the last link under pension bond, obligation bond possibility. Page three shows. The performance of our pension obligation bond since our two thousand four bond. We did two thousand three and two thousand four. So over sixteen years, you can see that our pension bond savings is seven point six million dollars. In present value, it's five point four million dollars or a thirty two point five percent savings. The projected savings when this ends in two thousand twenty eight. And that's based on just assigning assumed earnings rates at seven point two. You can see actual investment returns here and you see where that two thousand seven eight. Return came in. Uh the projection would be uh eleven million dollars in savings, six point five million dollars in present value. Or a forty percent savings for Silver Falls. Page four shows a base case for a new uh pension obligation bond. Thirty five point seven million for Silver Falls. This will actually, this would actually result in a in. When this closes in August, PERS would immediately give us an additional rate credit, which would save money even on next year's budget. Uh but you could see we could save six hundred thousand in the first year. This is based on. A total interest cost of three point five percent with assumed investment returns of seven point two percent. Of course, it's never gonna happen this way. It's gonna go, you know, some years will be better, some years will be worse. But you can see the projection, just based on that simple scenario, would be a a savings of sixteen point two million dollars or eleven point four million dollars present value. Thirty two percent savings. And then what's really neat is how they, on pages five and six, they they put. The thirty five million dollar borrowing into the two thousand two scenario, which again, we did it in two thousand three and two thousand four, but. The oh two, oh three and oh four are all coming out ahead. So they plug it into the returns based on. What happened into for the two thousand two and you can see the savings increase. Quite a bit from the base case. And then they plugged it into the worst offering that's been out there, the the October two thousand seven. Scenario and you can see, because the total interest cost is a couple of percentage points less, even starting out. In a catastrophic type of a year, uh the way this two thousand seven situation has gone since. It would still come out ahead. Then this page seven is a summary of those three scenarios. So last, I just wanted to show you real quick what the draft timeline looks like and that is the first link on this topic. It's two pages and you can kind of get a feel, they color code the dates. Kind of get an idea what the the key dates are. There's a lot of work involved, you know, for us here, like there was for the pension obligation bond refinance. Probably a little less, just because we're not being rated on our own and doing that, but there's there's a lot of, you know, a lot of uh. Things to submit and and deadlines to meet, but uh I'll tell you, if it's uh. Something that could save us money, then you know, something, something to consider, so. I probably got into it a little bit more than I planned on, but uh hopefully that provides you enough of a background, maybe enough curiosity to. To take a a closer look at uh some of those key pages. And uh be ready for Piper Sandler to give us even more information uh at our board work session this month. Sorry for putting you to sleep.
No, I I was thinking about questions, but I've, you know, we're meeting tomorrow and I'll I'll try to formulate really sound ones by then, hopefully.
I will say that it was really helpful to have them run those three scenarios. I think that's a really cool way to look at it. It's very um. It's very helpful. So yeah, it's it's good stuff. I look forward to to discussing it more.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Steve, I've got a quick one on the uh just regular finances. You didn't give us any update on enrollment. Has it changed substantially at all since?
Yeah, uh thank you, Jonathan. I pride uh appreciate you asking, actually. Actually, this is the first month it went up a little bit. We're starting to see uh just a little, I don't remember the exact number is, but the trend is now reversed, which that's. We're starting to see now that we're, you know, knocking on the door hybrid here, that people are starting to come back. I'm sorry I failed to mention that. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions, we are getting ready to move into our discussion items. We're two hours in. Does anybody need a break before we jump into our discussion items?
Please.
Okay.
Could we have just a brief break?
Yeah, how about five after? I show it's one after, that'd be about four minutes. Does that sound okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Four minute break, guys. All right, we'll jump into it. We have a few discussion items tonight. First up is twelve A, which is a draft of the board and budget calendar. That Debbie put together. This is really an opportunity to discuss it, see if there's just anything that stood out to anybody is possibly problematic. There's no. No action required tonight or anything, but it's just an opportunity to look at it and talk about it, should we need to, you know, have any discussions about dates. Anybody have anything you want to add? I mean, I looked at it. I didn't see anything that stood out to me particularly, so. Yeah, Janet.
Did we need to have um dates set aside for budget committee? Uh recruitment and nominations and elections and all that. I I seem to remember some conversation about. That being part of the calendar and I I don't know what we where we landed on that.
Yeah, boy, I don't remember if that was gonna be part of the calendar now that you mentioned it or not, honestly, Janet.
Or maybe there's a separate, a separate calendar. And 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 I can't remember if those if those dates are set down, maybe, maybe. Shelley can help me out, set down in policy. Cause I know in the past, like last year, we seemed to have a lot of trouble with those dates, you know, we kept moving them around and so. I'm not sure to what extent it would help to have those dates set. Beforehand, you know, so we so we are sure to keep to our schedule. And we don't have to answer that question now, just just something to think about.
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll take, I mean, unless Shelley, if you know offhand, I'll take an action to to look it up, though. I don't remember.
I could possibly interject in terms of uh the board policy work group that is working on DBA. And that uh the policy has a couple uh. Months in it where certain actions need to happen, but the work uh the work group is. Has some date, target dates more specifically that aren't going to be outlined in policy and I think Shelley or Lori, if you can. Maybe nod in agreement or add that we talked about having that adopted in July. As the timeline that we would want to to do that. It won't be in policy, but it'll be an outline for the board to follow. And we would adopt that or you would adopt that in July. I'm seeing Shelley nod, so I think I'm close to right.
You're close. Um yeah, so we we um Dawn, we had had specific dates, as Dan said. And we had it in policy and we thought that that might not be the appropriate place to have it and that it would be separate separated out. Um to put it either in this this timeline that Debbie has drafted. Or that you could put it in your, we could put it in our July, when we start, you know, we're putting everything together and dates and we're. Starting again, yeah, um you know, then and um so. You know, we have a good start on it on the dates, but we'll be bringing that to the board um to look at and to approve. Um, you know, doing that. So as far as this particular timeline goes, I think. Um we were just gonna keep it as is and then. Or we can, we can add those dates, right? You know, we can bring it to the board sooner and add those dates if we want to modify this document. But we're kind of still in the working process.
Yeah.
Kind of a, yeah.
No, I get it, I get it.
It might be better to just wait till July, when when we can get all together and solidify our calendars and such.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a preference for where they are necessarily, just that they are established somewhere.
Exactly, right. And we're we're ninety five percent close to that.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, great question, thanks. No other questions? We can move to the next one, which does have to do with dates and calendars and. So the March twenty second work session does fall during spring break. And um just for complete clarity, we wanted to double check, make sure nobody had any issues with that. The plan of record. Would be that we keep that date, but uh this is an opportunity to say, hey, uh you know, I'd rather. Consider the twenty ninth instead as an option. There are five Mondays in March, so you know. Doesn't have a dramatic impact one way or the other. To me, honestly, I I'm fine either way. Sound like.
I I can make the twenty second or the twenty ninth. Um I was just thinking about. I wanted to just refer back to Steve. He was gonna have, as you know, um a representative come out and. Um if it's easier for him to just keep that date or if it's easy enough to change it to the twenty ninth if needed.
Yeah, I think Shelley, I, you know, uh at the time, I I I called her Thursday morning, right after the meeting Wednesday and I hadn't even thought about. The twenty second. I mean, it's that's the way I was listed on the calendar, so I I I didn't ask about the twenty ninth, so. I know they're trying to make themselves as available to every district that would like to have a board presentation as possible and they have two or three different people that can. Can do that, so if the preference is to have the twenty ninth, I have, you know, no issue whatsoever, giving them a call first thing in the morning and seeing if we could. Do that, but I know you're trying to make a decision tonight as well, so.
I'm flexible either way.
Yeah.
It could be, I could be it either.
Yeah, I'm I'm, we're at it, we're on the road, we're traveling, but I'm I'm sure I could make the twenty second if I had to, but but the twenty ninth doesn't work. Would probably be easier for me, so. My preference is a twenty ninth, but I'll make the twenty second work.
I am flexible. It does not matter.
Same here.
I'm available on the twenty second, Jonathan, but not on the twenty ninth, so.
Okay. Sheldon?
I just had a quick question. What is the, what is planned to be on the agenda for the twenty second? Is it or the twenty nine? I mean, you know, the I'll be traveling as well, but I can make it happen where I'm going to be. But will I need to bring, I mean, you know, I'm not gonna be in my office. So I guess what's the idea of having the, what's on, what's the plan to have on the agenda? You know, I guess. Cause how to make a difference too.
Two, two things, Shelley, well, I'll bring the um calendar recommendation to you all. And present that um for how reconcile the days lost by the ice storm.
Okay.
Do you have some policy updates to go over as well?
Yeah.
Talking about those this Friday as well. We know we'll have DBEA.
Right.
For one, um and those are two things off the top of my head we'll need to focus on.
As far as the pension obligation bond information, it should uh shouldn't be anything different than the three links that are already on this agenda tonight.
Okay.
Think we'll have a draft copy of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar. That would be up for adoption in April then.
Okay.
And superintendent evaluation.
Uh we're we're doing the superintendent evaluation or?
It's, I don't, the agenda's not set yet, but that's something that's on the docket of things that need to get done.
So that would be good to know sooner than later, than a Wednesday before, you know, Monday of a board meeting. Or work session. Do you see what I mean? So we can do the work.
Um I tried to remind people before.
You could have sent out an email afterwards, but gotta stick to the agenda. Um. Okay, well, it sounds like kind of a loaded, got quite a bit going on. Um. Well, when will the final decision be for um the for Scott's review?
You mean.
Are we doing that on the work session? I mean, is that more than likely gonna happen?
I'm gonna say more than likely. How about that? Yeah.
More than likely gonna happen, okay. And this is, this is not his final review. It's just a review. Um, you know, not a formal uh review, correct?
Yeah, I think Debbie sent out the instructions a while back before the ice storm. And then the ice storm, uh basically, anything that was on the work session for February.
Oh.
Is now up for March.
Okay.
So you, the instructions that you've already received, I think are still valid.
Okay, well, that's good to know. If the information from the February is gonna be on the March, log and go back and look at that. So that's good to know. Thank you.
So just as for me, I may be traveling as well, so I have a small preference for the twenty ninth, but I could make the twenty second work as well. Um, yeah, it just sounds like a week where people may be on the move. Um, but I can do either.
Yeah, so so far, I've heard one person cannot make the twenty ninth and everybody can make the twenty second, but possibly with some challenges depending on where they are. I mean, given that, I'm inclined to leave it on the twenty second unless somebody really wants to push for the twenty nine. I appreciate everybody sharing and uh helping us make that decision on that. Twelve C, uh this was a request to add as an agenda topic regarding correspondence. Uh the intro to that is that it used to be a a standing agenda item for a long time and originally came into being when. People most typically received letters via the postal service, uh board chair might get a copy. The district secretary or the superintendent might get a a copy and. And you would use this as an opportunity to share said correspondence with the rest of the board. It was removed, what about three, two and a half? I don't remember when. I I was actually, I think, just brand new on the board when it was removed. And uh removed primarily because correspondence was almost exclusively electronic. And all board members had access to all correspondence as it arrived typically and could easily be forwarded and it just, it was a different process. And at the time, it didn't feel like it was necessary and so it was removed. So that's the background. Uh but this is an opportunity to discuss what that might mean for us as an agenda item, uh if we should add it back in the future.
Yeah, Jonathan, if 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 it were an agenda item, would it there, I mean. I'm not quite sure how it would work and it's and it's always something that even when I was chair and I was, we were getting these things, so if the board gets a letter.
Yeah.
Shared, is is, does that then become public knowledge? Does everybody get to see that John, Mary, you know, Joe Blow. Sent this letter. Now, granted, I mean, if you hit send on an email, it's it's still a public document, but is it would. Would technically, would we have to say that, you know, we got this letter and have it be part of the part of the packet? I don't. I don't know.
That's, I mean, that's the, that's. That's, I mean, that's, that's part of the right question, and logistically, of course. Becomes a burden for somebody somewhere. We get a lot of correspondence, right? It's different. Took a lot of work to write a letter, put a stamp on it, mail it. You know, writing an email takes you thirty seconds, you hit send and boom, and we get lots of them sometimes, you know. So a little bit of a different process.
Because that's all public record, isn't it? I mean, whether it's snail mail or electronic, it's still public record. I've gotten a couple mails, mailers, but I don't, I didn't know what to do with them. I just assumed the board got them. It's, it's hard to know what in mail, you know.
Well, I, I think we're getting, I mean, we're getting the emails, so I, I think how we do it now is fine. I, I don't think. You know, I mean, I like, I like how we're doing it now, and I guess, you know, those that would like a change can, you know, state their case, I guess, convince me, I suppose.
Yeah, Shelley.
Okay. So I just have two things. One is, do we. Has anybody contacted OSBA to see if there's any formal definition of correspondence, or was this just a. This, it was this just specific to Silverfall School District? I guess, you know, the historical context made sense. But the current twenty-twenty-one definition, we should probably find out. Just because I think it just leads to a better transparency as far as, you know. Whether we decide to have it on our agenda, but I think finding out the information first and what it means. From OSBA, maybe they might have a, something to say about it. And then second is. You know, everything that we do get is technically a public record. However, there could be information in those correspondence. Emails, texts, and such, fa, uh, social media posts. That could violate the law, and that means you can't reveal anything that has to do with a student. You know, personnel, medical records, things like that. So I feel like. You know, if we say that we have correspondence come to us, you know, through email, you know, all kinds of ways. We can't just read those out loud. I feel like they would have to be vetted through our attorneys. To make sure that nothing needs to be redacted, just in case, you know, someone is sending an email to the board about their child or. Medical right, or something of that nature. So those are just the two things that I was thinking of as far as correspondence.
Other board members with thoughts they want to share on this?
Okay. Yeah, the only, the only, a couple of thoughts that I had were, one, I'm not sure how we would curate them. So if we were each getting a handful of them. Every week or every month, we could have a real, you know, that could be very time consuming to read all of those through. And so how do we decide, you know, then, then we get into that issue of how to sort of adjudicate what, what we read and what's important and what isn't important. And then the other concern I have is that when people email, they, even though they may understand that their email is now a matter of public record. They feel somewhat comfortable with that because, you know, the likelihood of a public record search that's going to, they, you know, that's, that's relatively unlikely, whereas. Knowing that their email may or may not be read in a public meeting is sort of a different level of, of disclosure and. I feel for some people, you, would you have, would you ask their permission? Would you just read it? And maybe that would discourage them from emailing, emailing us because it would create uncertainty about. You know, whether their, whether their email was going to be shared. So I think there's a lot of complexity. You know, and at the least of which is legal, as Shelley alluded to, and so. I, I think a case would really need to be made that this was an important thing to do, because I think it becomes very complicated.
Thanks, Jennifer. I'll, I'll piggyback on that real quick. Sorry, I just saw your hand, Jennifer, one sec. The, the, the other piece that I think is, I, I don't know if it's unique to us, it certainly is something that we. We don't have to do, but we do have two opportunities for public comment at every regular monthly board meeting. And, you know, I would argue that if somebody really wants to make their, their case or make their point. There, there's ample opportunity, and we do try to make sure that that's accessible, you know, right now, at least with, with our current format, it's extraordinarily accessible. Self, when you're on Zoom, you don't even have to be there in person. And so, so I guess, you know, my inclination is. I don't think it's broken. I, I think all these are public records technically, and if somebody wanted, they could certainly make a request. The, you know, if, if we were to try to go anything past that, it creates a burden and a cost. As Shelley pointed out, there's legal, I hadn't even thought about that. It was a good point. There's also the logistical cost. Somebody's got to make sure. That said emails are stored in some, you know, repository that are accessible, let's say, because they're. Public record. Well, again, they already are, but it's, it's the procedural piece of it that I think could easily overwhelm somebody. And, you know, yeah, you've got to vet them all, you've got to manage it. And I'm not sure how many people would even look at it, to be honest with you, if that existed. So, anyway, my two cents, I, I, I'm good with it. Jennifer, I think you were gonna add something.
Yeah, I, I think lots of good points have been brought up by everybody who's contributed. One thing that. I would like to propose is that we have a group email address that. So a, a public, a member of the public can just have to email that one email address, and then it goes to all board members. Because I think people get bogged down with having to find all seven members, and it just makes sense for it to. For us to make it easier for members of the public. So I'd like to propose that and, and, you know, if we can. Get consensus on that, maybe we can make that happen.
So does that mean that we get rid of our individual? Like, is that another option? So we'd have individual and the group?
Yeah, just an addition is all I'm proposing.
I thought we had that. Don't we have something the school board and it lists our names?
Not for the public. That doesn't work for the public. It only works for people inside the system.
I think it's a great ad. It certainly, you know, we, I think we've all had that case where. We thought somebody had sent their email to the whole board, and it didn't get forwarded to somebody because they were left off inadvertently. You know, you glance at it, it looks like all the board members are there, you didn't really read to make sure they were all there, or maybe there was a typo in one person's name. And it went to everybody but one person because there was a typo. You know, we've all seen that. I think, Jennifer, it's a great idea.
I'm not sure we would need a motion or anything, just, this is just kind of a common sense kind of thing, and hopefully we can just make that happen.
Yep. We'll follow up. You and I, Jennifer, can follow up with Debbie. I, I can take the action and the follow-up specifically.
So should we find out from OSBA, just to be safe and transparent, what the definition is of correspondence and why it was, you know, on. Agendas initially and what twenty-twenty-one definition is? Just to fulfill our due diligence of this topic. I mean, it's not necessarily gonna change anything, but it's at least, you know.
Yeah, I did follow.
We're doing our job.
I didn't follow up on, does it mean something different today? I could, I could reach out and find out what.
Right. I, yeah, I think it's just for information only, honestly, that way we're all aware, and that way, you know. You know, Ray Kizer, you know, he asked the question, and it would be nice to give him an answer and, and the other, and the public as well, just so we're all in the same. You know, playing field, so.
Yeah, I'll take an action to follow up on that as well.
Okay.
I'm not hearing any other items related to this. I'm ready to move on. So the last call here, any, any last topics on correspondence? Okay. Uh, the next one is a carryover from a month ago when we took a, well, there was a motion and a, and a vote to. Put on the agenda, on a future agenda, a conversation around a letter from the board urging. Governor to adjust metrics to help us get kids back in school, which that's an evolving thing. I mean, it has changed somewhat since even a month ago, right? So. But we went ahead and we kept it on the agenda because we said we were going to, and Tom put together a talking point draft, and Tom, I'll let you give the, the intro.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, things have changed since then. I'm glad to see some of the, some of the metrics and, you know, the governor is. Ordering some schools to open up. Early, you know, in, 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 in various models, mostly hybrid. But in April. And so it kind of took some of the, what I was trying to say out of it, but it still holds true, and, and I guess it, it does. Toward the, you know, most of my factual statements, at least that I thought were, were facts or were talking about. Still whole, but mainly down toward the end is. I've been getting lots of questions from people about what's next year going to look like. And that's, that's what a lot of the public has, has been asking me, and so. That's where that, the, the resolution down there at the very bottom was, was kind of, you know, I wanted some, I, I would probably actually even maybe strengthen that. That statement a little bit, and hopefully push toward, ha- have some verbiage in there that says, you know. Maybe delete half of that statement, say, push toward a full, full in-person reopening for the fall of, of twenty-twenty-one, but you know. Th- this is my. First shot at it, and, and those, those are my words, and I, I guess I'd like to see what everyone else is into thinking, see if we can come around. Consensus on this. So anyway, Jennifer, I saw you had your hand up, so maybe, please.
You're muted again. Jennifer, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. I wrote a few things down, looking at what you wrote, and. The, the third, no, the second paragraph in that talks about. Socioeconomic classes. I wonder if that could just be like all students instead of socio-economic classes. But I'm not gonna die on that hill. That's just, that would just be more palatable for me. And, and then the third one down. That mentions it at the end. Especially for our students from underserved communities. Have suffered disproportionately. So from the coverage I've read, like, I'm not super comfortable with that statement. And from the coverage I've read from the beginning of the pandemic until now. And the data has shown that communities of color are more hesitant to send their children to in-person school. And I don't think we have received as a board. Evidence from our school district that necessarily supports that fit. So I guess I would lobby for taking that part after the comma out. And then. At the end, the, the bit about asking for more in-person learning, I think that. At this point, I would prefer to wait until we see these new, the possibility of. You know, about the possibility of new metrics being released that, that Scott alluded to. Because we aren't public health officials, and. That is the one thing that's holding us back for being, you know, it, you, back to five days a week. Is the, the cohorting requirement. And so if that changes based on the public health officials. You know, that determine that, I think that's awesome. And I guess that's the point that. You know, I, I guess I'm a little hesitant at this point, because those metrics are on the horizon potentially. And the fact that I'm not a public health official, and so i- i- it's hard to make the ask. From that standpoint. So anyway, I'm just wondering if, if we wanted to. Revisit this potentially after we get those potential metric changes.
Yeah, that, yeah, Jennifer, I really don't have a problem with that, because like I said, most, the, the, kind of the purpose of this statement is mainly. Aimed toward next year, because it, it, I know what's been frustrating me and is watching. Parents and our school district kind of get whipsawed. With, with kind of some false hopes, and it, it kind of felt like Charlie Brown and Lucy in a football, you know, it was gonna. Things changed so much, and it, when, you know, when, when an announcement is made, that's a. Like the public in the, especially our district, really didn't know what was coming. It caused a lot of grief. And, and that's, that's what I want, and, and even, and even for our parents, I mean, because I got people asking me. Be blunt, I'll be blunt, they're saying, should I keep my kids in private school next year? Like, you know, and, and I tell them, I don't know. You know, the, the, the people who have made these decisions are, are still gonna be in charge, and so. I don't know, I'm trying to con- convince them, and you know, and especially like to, you know, people are, people are thinking. You know, is it okay, is. Should, you know, if, if, if people stay in private schools or homeschooling, it's gonna affect our, our district. It, it, it's gonna cause us grief and hardship. And I think hardship on the students, you know. So I, I like, anyway.
I agree with that part, Tom. I totally agree, and maybe that would be the point that would be easier, an easier point to make. Because that, I have heard that from families.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of where I guess that, that, that sentence, the, the ending was, you know. So our educators can make clear and appropriate plans, and so, and, 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 and so can, so can our parents.
Yeah, 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 and I get that, it's just that, the. I don't know if we can. Predict the public health implications of all of it. I guess that, that's my, my only hangup is just that, that piece. And, and, and I agree, like, I kind of rolled my eyes when we got the latest governor's proclamation, because. We had January, which was one way, and now we've got the exact opposite. And so. A- a- and it's based on things are changing and data is changing, and I get that. So, yeah, I guess.
This was a draft.
Those are my ideas, yeah. Those are my ideas, and I hope that they make sense, at least in case there's more drafting.
Yeah, and I don't, and, and this was, this is something I came up with to start a conversation, that I did not intend to. Write these words down and have it be the perfect thing that everyone was gonna vote yes on. It was here to, to start a conversation, and, and you know, to be, and I have no problem with your earlier edits. I tend to like that language better, but. You know, as I've been. Yeah, it's, it's been hardest. You know, I don't, I'm not good at some of the current language, politically correct language, but it's been tougher on. You know, folks who don't have professional grade jobs, you know, what was it, forty percent of the layoffs occurred from people? I, I can't remember. It's just the, 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 the people who don't make as much money have really suffered in this a lot, and their students, so.
And I totally agree with that.
That's why some of those wordage, attempts at wordage was.
I think that's true. I just would like that, for me, it's hard as a, you know, somebody who's got. A job where I can't, I have to stay home, and I'm, I'm in a more of a position of privilege. That's my assumption, but I'd like to hear it directly from those groups that they want what the outcome is that we're asking for. So that, that's just my, I just want to be careful that I'm not trying to. Tell somebody else what's good for them.
Right, right, right.
Fair enough, yeah.
Hey, Tom. I wanted, I want, yeah, I wanted to say too, I, I'm not a health professional, but I am an instructor, and. I do miss my classroom, and I miss the students, but I'm in a situation too where they're not allowing us to come back. At this time, and. And and it's because of everything that's going on. And I think what's made it very tough and and after visiting the schools in our district for the reopening plan, the amount of dedication and work that every school is doing right now to just, you know, provide this hybrid model is is phenomenal. And it's I would love to see a normal again that we once knew before pre-COVID. But, you know, one of the discussions that I had with with some of the teachers and individuals at the schools is that what we thought was important 30 days ago quickly changes 30 days later. And it just seems that we're in this great flux of new information, things changing. I have to admit, Governor Brown has has brought forth, you know, another challenge ahead. But I'm with Jennifer that I really think we should just wait. I don't feel like I'm in a position to to say this is what it needs to be. And I don't know. None of us have a crystal ball. So we really don't know. I only hope, I only hope that things continue to go down and we can reopen school again. But so that's my feeling.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
I think where I am with this is that there is clear direction and momentum for the district currently. And and to Lori's point, an enormous amount of work has been put into preparing for the next eight weeks, 12 weeks. Can't do the math. I would really hesitate to do anything that would distract from that or undermine the district's current direction. It I think I think for the, you know, we can't move any faster. And and the metrics have improved dramatically for us. And so I'm really excited about where we're, what we're going to be able to do for students over the next couple of months. I I could support taking a look at another resolution, maybe early summer, after we've seen how these months play out, to really ask, I think the thing that I could support asking for is clear guidance. So I also, along with Jennifer, have some some issues with the language here. So I'm not super comfortable with a lot of it. But I but I could support asking the governor early in the summer to say, whatever you plan for the fall, please don't change it every every three weeks. We need clear guidance. We need it established. And then, you know, we can't keep doing this, as you said, Tom, this sort of whipsaw of back and forth. And so that's something I would feel very comfortable asking for. I don't think, and I mentioned this before too, I I can't ask for metrics to be one way or another. I'm not an epidemiologist. So so I would rather put that energy and momentum behind that kind of an ask for the fall, rather than trying to do something now when it feels like, well, we're already going in a direction. What are we really asking for her to do at this point? And and ODE is coming out with new guidance again. And so that those are my preferences.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, Sean.
Um, so I I'm not going to say a whole lot because I just agree with, I agree with Jennifer and Lori and Janet on multiple statements that they made. And I think that I think that there is a time and place for this resolution. And my thought would be definitely for the fall, depending on what we see with numbers and the way the state is going, you know, in June and July. And I just think now, you know, we are on a momentum, kids are planned to go back, we're we're going that direction. And but I'd like to keep this on the back burner and and keep it where we can within reach if needed for the fall. But we I we just can't predict the future and what's going to happen. So we just have to, um, you know, keep this in the back of our mind, I think. So at this time, I'm I'm not ready to support this particular resolution at this time, but it could be later on in the summer if needed, we can come back to it. So. Yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Shelley. Yeah, I guess my, where was my my thoughts? You know, I I don't anticipate schools opening fully this this rest of this year. I'd be ecstatic, but I don't see that. But, you know, things like maybe they could loosen up some regulations and let more people at sporting events or you know, like they do and, you know, that at when I go to mass on Sunday, they got every other pew blocked off and things like just do, just do some calm, allow some more common sense things and slowly start moving toward a place back to normal. Just please, and encouragement of that type of thing. That's not, that's the type of statement we need that. I think my gripe for how this pandemic has been handled is is been, it's it's a chaotic and scary situation and people try to control it to 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 save things. But one of the things we we miss when we're all together, you know, we can all get together and a bad thing can happen and that's spread the virus. And that's that's a bad thing. But listen to a great guy, he was a philosopher or somebody, he was talking about serendipity. And that's what happens when the unknown wonderful things happen. And that's what's missing right now in our society. And we need to get back to that place where, God, imagine how great it felt, you know, to be in the auditorium. We had Scott put a picture of the auditorium tonight of, you know, in there for a play or a concert or a basketball game in a gym, you know, maybe at one-third capacity or something. I don't know. Let's, I just continue to encourage, you know, have faith in the vaccines, have faith in everyone's common sense that they know how to, you know, act and keep this virus, you know, on the downward, on the downward trend. So have some faith. And I've been, let's, let's try to encourage them to reopen, to reopen and let's get together. So thank you all for your input. I obviously, I I'm for tabling this to 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 future date. I'd like to talk about it next, next full work session, maybe, or next full session. I don't know. What 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 are the rest you, what are the rest think?
Yeah.
I I definitely think this is something that, you know, the idea of communicating the frustrations of our community. I I think that that it has a lot of merit and it might continue to have merit, you know, in a in a month. It we we could, I don't want to like set this aside so far that we're we're not thinking about the frustrations of our community. I guess that's my point.
Yeah, I, you know, one of the things that, I mean, it lost change in last month, for sure. We've got hybrid coming down. I'm gonna say hybrid's still only two days a week, right? So from my perspective as a parent and as a board member, that seems wholly insufficient for educating our kids. So I'm just going to go on the record, I think it's not nearly good enough. It is a good start for sure. But in terms of of what's being lost and what's been lost over the last year, you know, I've got a sixth grader, it's very evident to me what's been lost, right? And so, so I'm I'm in favor of, you know, if we want to table this and talk about it as it is fall concept, I think that makes a lot of sense in my mind. I don't have any issue waiting a month or two and seeing what happens if the guidelines change. You know, if they announce we're going to be back in five day a week, you know, in in the fall, maybe we don't even need to proceed with it, right? There was a lot of talk about concern that we're not health experts. I'm going to agree with that. I mean, I'm not for sure. But let's all be also really honest, these have been political decisions predominantly. There's every state in the nation's got a different set of rules. So I'm not super convinced that that that's entirely science-based. So I'm, I'm thinking it, you know, our role could be to say, okay, there are going to be trade-offs. Our preference is that the kids don't, you know, pay the heaviest cost when all those trade-offs are made. Yeah, or
Yeah, Tom, I I think your proposal or your, what you wrote up has a lot of merit, like Jennifer said. And I appreciate you saying something because there's some of us or, you know, myself that, like Jonathan said, it maybe doesn't even go far enough. But the way things change so quick, sometimes you, by biting your tongue, you know, you you're a little safer. But at the same time, we got to pay attention, like Jennifer said, to the community, what the survey showed, how many of the community wanted their kids back in school. There's a lot of merit to that. We got to pay attention to that. So thanks for saying something, Tom.
So it sounds like the the overriding consensus among the board is that we'll kind of put this on the back burner, we'll consider it at the next work session, possibly if we want after that, depending on what happens with metrics and whatnot. Is that, I guess I'm looking for head nods, is that what I'm hearing? Thumb up from Tom.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's so much that can happen in the next 30 days. Look at how much has happened since the last 30 days. So I guess I don't want to see this at the next work session in two weeks. I would love to see this at the work session, maybe in April or May, just to revisit it and see where the numbers are and where we're headed and what's out there. There's just so much out there that could change. And we'll keep, we'll we'll keep wordsmithing this resolution and it will never go anywhere because it keeps changing. So I don't want to, you know, I don't know, it's a tight rope. It's it's walking a tight rope without a net.
And I misspoke when I said the next work session. I was actually thinking April. I said the next one, but I was thinking April.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
I'm thinking April and May really is what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it's, I mean, I think it's important to have, but I I just think that things change so quickly and Scott's getting updates, you know? He was getting updates every hour at some point, you know? And and there's just so much information coming that's turning over what what's happening. And I don't want to send something to the governor that's going to be old news, right? I mean, it's it's extremely frustrating.
Yeah.
That's just the bottom line. Very frustrating. So I don't know, maybe May or June, when we have more information. Or we could even move it up if there's more information that comes out earlier, right? Maybe we just pay attention.
That's what I'm thinking. You know, we'll put it on the back burner, pay attention and see what makes sense. Okay. Seems like there's general consensus around that. I'm not hearing any dissent. Right. If that's the case, we are going to move to item 13 on our agenda, which is our second public comment. Maddie or Debbie, has there been any requests?
We have just one person, Aaron Cook. I'm going to promote him now.
All right.
Aaron, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time this evening to to speak on to to you all. And I want to thank the board and Scott and all the staff and all the teachers for really working hard to get our kids back to school in the hybrid model. And as a parent, I'm extremely appreciative, especially with the high school, being able to pull that back almost nearly a month and get our kids right back right after spring break. So kudos to y'all and to the staff, the teachers and to our administration. So thank you very much. On this resolution, I'm really excited to hear and am proud to see our board talking about this. And I think it's really noted that that I think it's time for our board to make a statement to our government, to the ODE about getting our kids back in school. But I want to say this, I'm not asking you as a parent to be a public health official. I'm not asking you to do anything that that is extraneous. I'm asking you for leadership. On behalf of myself, my my own family, my wife, I can't speak for anybody else other than my own household. But our kids have suffered too long and we're asking for you all to step up and to lead and to make a statement. We're not asking, or I think Tom said that to have the faith to believe that things by September will be in a much better situation. Our data is trending and seeing and showing that right now. The vaccines are being more readily available. The numbers continue to trend in a very, very positive direction. We're asking you to step up and to challenge our governor, to challenge the ODE to say, this is what the the community of Silver Falls desires, to get our kids back into school full-time in September, above all, in a very safe manner. So again, I appreciate you discussing this tonight, but I'm asking for your wording to be much more direct. I'm asking for your wording to be much more stronger in the fact that we need to get our kids back full-time in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron.
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. There we go, it's fixed.
Hello, I think I'm back.
Sorry about that, Jonathan.
No worries. So any, Maddie, any other requests in the meantime?
I have gotten none.
Okay. With that, we will move to our action items in R2. The first is the K5 boundary reconfiguration, which we were, we spent some time on at our last work session. And we also had some additional conversation today on. At this point, I would accept the motion to approve the proposed recommended scenario from the work group for the K5 boundary reconfigure.
I move that we adopt the proposal for regarding the K5 boundaries.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Sounds like there isn't any. And let's proceed, Steve.
Irv.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Shelley.
Yes.
And Tom.
Hi. Thank you.
All right. Good job to the committee. Well done. And I'm glad that there was such, you know, consensus built around. Okay, next up, we have the Sequoia Falls Academy building lease adjustment that was discussed by Steve earlier. And at this point, I would accept the motion to accept the amendment as proposed by by Steve.
I'll make that motion. I move that we accept the amendment to the lease for the Sequoia Falls Academy Building on Water Street.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion before we proceed with a vote?
I'm sorry, I was, Lori, that seconded?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Irv.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Tom? Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. That moves us to item 15, future agenda item request, which is just an opportunity to say, hey, I'm thinking about XYZ and I will note it down.
Yes, I do.
Yes, thank you.
As you know, board, that I have, I wanted to talk about the Arts Resolution.
As you know, board, that I have, I wanted to talk about the Arts Resolution. And I understand that with all the. The fires and the ice and the COVID. That it just simply isn't something that worked into the timeline of what we've been experiencing. But I would like to hear from Mr. Drew next month. A little bit about this Arts Resolution, about the wonderful people behind it. I understand that there are some people that are working on that. And cultivating concepts and goals. And I wanted to know if you would be comfortable with that maybe. In the future, Mr. Drew.
Of course, Lori.
Oh.
Um, yeah, I.
I'd be happy to.
I I want to keep breathing. Life into the resolution, so I look forward to that and thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I just have one that I noticed tonight in our meeting. Multiple board members use the word consensus many times tonight. And I liked it. It was it was well received and there was a request to discuss a consensus-driven decision-making model. For making decisions on the board. And I think because so many board members tonight use that word in their statements or wanted to get a. Final consensus. I think it would be appropriate to at least talk about that. And, you know, maybe it is something that some board members want to to discuss, so I just wanted to throw that out there. It was just an observation and. You know, I'd like to see it at some point soon, just to discuss whether we use it or not, but at least we can discuss it.
Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, we are ready. To go to item sixteen, which is to adjourn, so without objection, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Nice to see you.